Hey, everybody.
Hi, Tracy.
How are you?
Good.
Good. So, we're going to get started with the meeting. It's a meeting to set the, I mean, to discuss the rates for the property tax. And we, because of the million-dollar adjustment, the form that, Richie, are you going to show that form again, or just discuss it?
Well, if Patrick from our board was going to share, do the share screen, screen share with that.
Okay, and so we'll go over it really quickly, and then we'll field any questions that anyone has. I have talked at length with Richie a few times and I'm pretty comfortable with what's being presented. I want to welcome my colleagues, Tim Allen, who's on the committee, Counselor Walsh, Counselor Tim Allen, sorry, Counselor, Counselor Justin Hurst, just joined, Counselor Curran, Counselor Letterman, I think is having some problems because he's in and out of the Zoom, but we'll welcome Counselor Letterman, Counselor Fenton just joined. I want to thank all of the Finance Committee that's here. Nancy Creed from, why do I always get this blurry, right, the Springfield Chamber, is on the rate, tax rate setting committee, so I want to welcome her. Everybody from Finance, thank you all for coming, TJ and the team. And we're just going to go ahead and get, oh, hi Kathy, Kathy Brown here from East Forest Park Civic Association, Chair, thank you Kathy. And we're going to go ahead and get started. So, if you need to speak, you can introduce yourselves at that time, but I think we all see each other's names, and we have all seen each other before. So Richie, I'm just going to turn it over to you, and then we'll fill questions because this has to be a quick meeting because we have another one right at 4:30.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to speak briefly, as you indicated, since last Monday's meeting, we have good news to deliver and which we've distributed and has been announced publicly, and that is the mayor, in recognition of the challenges and struggles that homeowners and business owners are facing. The mayor, after consulting with the financial team, decided that he would propose a $1 million transfer from free cash specifically to reduce the tax levy, and that would result in lower tax rates. So, we are now operating with a proposed levy of $227.5 million. Last Monday night, it was $228.5. So, I think that's on the agenda for the 5:30 City Council Special Meeting. I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. So, essentially, I sent out on Friday afternoon to the committee members, as well as to the city councilors, the updated rate sheet. And Patrick from our board, Patrick, if you hear me, would you do the screen share? There we go. Thank you, Patrick. Is everyone able to read the options table, our rate sheet in front of you?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. So, the upper left box in gray is the fiscal year '21, our relevant value totals. You see our levy limit of $228, 522, 820, and a levy of $227, 522, 820. So there's your million-dollar reduction. The single rate, if all classes of property were to be taxed at the same rate, and no one is proposing that, it would be $24.11, which is the top line in the grid down below. The boxes in blue merely represent last year's numbers, just for reference to everybody. The, so, in the middle of the grid, in blue, we have the mayor's recommendation, which is $18.90 per thousand for the residential tax rate. That's a reduction of 63 cents from last year's rate. And that would keep the commercial, industrial, personal tax rate level at $39.23. So, this is the good news. And I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have. But I, that's, in summary, that's my presentation.
Just want for clarity for TJ for a moment, just to talk about how we came to the million-dollar decrease, just so it could be on public record.
That's, that's a good question, Counselor. So, the million-dollar amount, really.
Can we get rid of the screen?
What was that, Counselor Walsh?
Can we get rid of the screen, or do we need to leave it up?
Patrick, you can stop screen sharing. Yeah, so we were, we were having a conversation on how to, what, how to have the most impact on the tax rate, and what could be done and be put on the table. And now, when I was in the mayor's office, you know, he asked about, can we bring the average, I think the average, if Richie's correct, is a $122 increase, $123, I don't remember exactly, but we, we wanted to be below the 150. We were at around 150, we wanted to be below that and get us closer to the 115, 120 range. And I was most comfortable with just a million dollars to bring the rate down to below $19. We thought that was significant for the city to say rates below $19. And then, we wanted to keep the commercial rate the same as last year. So the million dollars, there's really much magic to it, you know, other than, I think it's basically a responsible way to bring the taxes down a reasonable amount, the tax rate down a reasonable amount. But I wasn't comfortable going beyond a million dollars when we did that.
How's it going?
Thank you, thank you TJ. I want to welcome Counselor Ramos, and I'm going to meet him. I'll just welcome him to the meeting. And I did ask to see what a 1.5 million reduction would do, and I see your hand raised, Counselor Walsh, just one moment.
No problem.
I kind of wanted to talk about where the million dollars came from, like, how did we get a million dollars to reduce that amount, TJ? So, I want that clarified for the council, because I did get that question a couple of times, where the million dollars came from to reduce.
Excellent, sorry, I should mention this. The city just certified $7.3 million in free cash for fiscal year '20. So we were comfortable and willing to put a million dollars on the table from that certified free cash that just happened last week by the Department of Revenue. And it's kind of a good news story to be able to certify $7.3 million surplus during a pandemic, when we were losing revenue and, you know, wanted to make sure we, with the hiring freeze, the spending freeze, to make sure that we could afford to keep core services going.
Thank you, TJ. And I want to welcome Counselor Gomez, who's also part of the Finance Committee and the Tax Rate Setting Committee, along with Nancy, Tim and I. I think we're the only ones who joined so far. But, um, so, Caterie, or Counselor Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Richie, I think that's significant and welcome news. And I'm just, I'm sorry, TJ, you were speaking. I'm just wondering, has this ever been done before? Or, you know, we certainly know that we have found ourselves in a very different situation this year with, with COVID and many hardships that weren't anticipated.
So, it's been done in other communities this fiscal year, setting the tax rate in other communities. I think Chicago just did it recently. We did do this probably about 10 or 11 years ago. I don't know, Richie, the exact date, where under Lee Ernman, we put $4 million on the table to reduce taxes. What makes that? I, I was against it back when we did it, only because we lost that revenue, and we were complaining to the state about lost revenue. The state, the rating agency, didn't like that we weren't maximizing our revenue available to us. We did it as a shot in the arm to the homeowners and to the business community back during this last recession. What makes this year different, and why I'm comfortable with a million dollars, is we actually have some levy capacity that we did not have back then. So, not that we're going to tax the levy capacity, but that just shows that our ceiling has grown in a, in a way that is significant to tell our, our financial story and leave our financial picture. So, I don't know, Richie, anything to add to that piece of it? How it differs from the time we did it before, and how we, why we do it now?
Sure, thank you TJ. So, it was fiscal 2011, in which we reduced the levy. And it was a significant reduction at the time. We were, you know, it was exactly 10 years ago now. It was November, December 2010. And my recollection is that, you know, we were coming out of the, the financial crisis. There was a lot of foreclosure activity that was happening in the city. There was some layoffs in the city of, you know, private employers, et cetera. And I think that, I was in the room when that discussion took place and that decision was made, and I supported it at the time. So, but I think the idea was to really send a signal to the business community and the homeowners that, that we were looking for more investment and looking to recognize that, you know, that they were meeting some, some challenges. And I mean, the foreclosure activity is just a very, very negative memory that I have at the time. We had a two- or three-year period there that was, was very difficult and, you know, really set us on a path to hit our levy ceiling again. So, we're looking to encourage investment and confidence in the city. And, and that was the, that was the thinking at the time.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to see if any of my colleagues have any more questions about the tax ratio and the mayor's recommendation, any questions or comments? Thank you, Counselor Walsh, that was a great question, or comment and question. If not, during the tax rate special meeting, setting special meeting, we are going to recommend going with the mayor's recommendation because after speaking and getting a memo from Nancy Creed, they are comfortable with staying at the same rate of 39.23, same as last year, even though the gap would be a little wider. And there will be a reduction of 63 cents to the residents, and so that's also great news. And the average bill will increase about $123 for our residents, which is less than it would have been previously. And so I do see that Counselor Walsh has raised her hand. And then, we'll go to Nancy Creed, who's on the committee, and then Jesse, following Nancy.
Thank you again, Madam Chairman. And, you know, I didn't know, quite know when to bring this up, but I did speak earlier with Richie and with Council President Hurst. And we have alluded to the fact that there have been hardships, foreclosures, and losses in business. So I'm hoping, I don't know the appropriate time, but I'm hoping that we might be able to have some kind of a program or hardship category or something to do with the taxes this year for the difficult circumstances and unusual circumstances that people have found themselves in this year. So I'm hoping we might be able to bring that up or somehow add it to this discussion on, on taxes. Because none of us want to see, you know, anybody take a loss this year. It's, you know, there've been, there's been so much that's been difficult for people. I'm hoping we can ease the burden somehow.
Are you speaking to, like, job loss due to COVID or something like that? Maybe they can't afford to pay their tax bill?
Some kind of a special COVID category.
Program for that? Yeah, I agree with that. Thank you for saying that.
I know Counselor Hurst has been thinking along the same lines, so I can't actually take full credit for the idea.
Exactly. We kind of are on the same line. So, thank you. Nancy?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chairman. Just to reiterate, I know I shared the chamber statement with all of you, and then we shared it with the media. But I just wanted to let you know that the business community does appreciate what our residents are going through. As I mentioned in my email, they are our workers, they are our friends, they are our family. We are all in this together, and so we support the mayor's recommendation and would very much appreciate this committee supporting that recommendation as well. And hopefully, the city council will adopt that.
Thank you, Nancy. And I do want to say, I want to thank my colleagues because we did put a lot of pressure on the administration to see what they can do to reduce the tax rate or the tax bill. And so I know that, due to some of that pressure, the million dollars of free cash was discussed because we, we talked about it a lot last year. I know Counselor Letterman, we were all over it, and it just didn't seem to happen last year. So we are thrilled to see that this year, the administration took the necessary steps to reduce the tax bills as much as possible. Counselor Letterman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted to bring up a couple of pieces, and I'll probably bring them up again also during our tax ratio meeting when we have the full body. But, and I apologize, my camera's not on, I'm actually restarting my computer because I was having some audio issues, so I'm on via my phone. But I just wanted to bring up two pieces. One is, I think that, you know, the, the path that we seem to be traveling down right now, I think, does send an important message. It's great to hear from Ms. Creed that the chamber is also supportive of this path. But I do want us to just continue to think long-term. As I mentioned in the, the last hearing that we had, you know, values are up this year, and I think that they will, on paper, be up even higher, if not sort of drastically higher next year. And so I just want us to continue to be very strategic and careful about the steps we're taking in the time between now and then, because I think we're going to be in a little bit even more turbulent economic times at that point. And I think we're going to have a real estate bubble that is going to come down, if not burst. And so I just want us to be aware of that, especially given that, you know, this million dollars is going to reduce the total levy that we collect this year, but it is still going to be a part of our tax levy. And so, what we don't want to see is a future where there's a drastic increase that might not be accounted for as a result of both higher values and as a result of that future levy being collected. So that was one piece I just want us to just be thinking about. And the Chair does an excellent job in holding these hearings, so I know in the coming year, we'll have more opportunities to explore that. And just the second piece that I spoke with TJ and Richie about, and I know we're going to be hopefully talking with Mr. Caputo about this, is being able to put a guide insert possibly into the tax bill that outline both how to access the circuit breaker for eligible individuals, and also a more clear explanation of the abatements that might be available to certain classifications of ratepayers. Of course, the Chair does an excellent job with the info sessions and things like that. It would be great if we could also be able to provide that information in a consolidated format to all of the taxpayers who may not have a chance to access that excellent resource. So hopefully, we can, we can do that, especially this year, when, when people may have had unforeseen expenses, as Counselor Walsh alluded to.
That's excellent idea, Counselor Letterman. I do want to say that budget season is coming up, and that's when we need to be mindful of the increases to the property tax that are added to the budget. And so that's the time, because once we get to the rate, once we get to the rate setting, we have to set a rate to meet that revenue guideline that we approved in the budget. And so the time is now to think about how much that's going to increase in FY '22 budget. And so I think that's great points that you made for us to consider. Counselor President Hurst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'm just going to echo some of the sentiments that my colleagues have already raised. I think while I'm extremely grateful that the mayor and the administration has decided to apply that $1 million to lowering the amount that citizens will have to pay ultimately in their tax bills, what my frustration is with that is that it applies across the board. And so I know that there are some folks who are really struggling as a result of COVID-19, who need relief now, and who are not thinking about a year from now. And especially those individuals that don't fit into the categories, you might be provided with some sort of state relief. And so the hope was that there might be some money, additional money, and I wish we would have had this conversation beforehand, because maybe there was a way in which we could have given a little less across the board to lower the amount that we pay, and then had maybe $500,000 towards a specific fund that provides relief for individuals who are struggling and have lost their job as a result of COVID-19 right now. Someone like myself, I don't need, I haven't lost my job, so I don't need that reduction, and would much rather have seen that money go to somebody who did need it. And so, being that the million dollars is already set, you know, certainly I'm going to, I'm going to support it. It might be nice if we could find an additional pot of money to where folks could access that money who are struggling to pay their taxes now and can't afford an increase, even if it's less than what they would have ordinarily had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Hurst. Those are great points. TJ, quick question before we close the meeting. The free cash conversations are not done, are they? So, I mean.
No, no, they're not done to any stretch. We just got it certified, and the only thing is we have to move all the money before June 30th, so the conversations aren't over yet.
Okay, so we can certainly have a conversation, because I know that, I did ask to see what it would look like if we added a 1.5 million to the levy, to reduce the levy. I didn't get that information, but I know it was a short amount of time, so not placing any type of blame there. I just wanted to reiterate that I did ask for that. And I want to maybe have a discussion about the free cash and some of the uses that we can use it for. I know we like to put a hefty amount in the reserves, but there are situations that's happening right now, as Counselor President Hurst alluded to. And so I think that it's important that we help people now while we can, and then put the rest in reserves. A lot of times, free cash is used for things on a department level, but we also need to think about our residents and how we can help the people in the city of Springfield. So I'll, I'll be setting up that meeting with you and the finance teams. Thank you. Any other questions from any of my colleagues or comments? Anyone else on the Zoom that wants to ask a question? Oh, Counselor Allen?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to compliment the mayor and the administration for the effort to put, to, to use that million dollars of free cash. Obviously, it's needed this year, and circumstances allowed us to be able to do it. And also to compliment Nancy Creed and the business community for recognizing the situation and, and, and going along with the mayor's recommendation. So I think those are two great things that happened and position us maybe for a good vote later tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is this the meeting that we make a motion to support the tax rate? Counselors? It is? And, okay.
So moved.
Thank you. Tim, Nancy, anyone want to second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. All right, and so we're going to support the recommendation of the mayor. Thank you, Nancy, for always, you know, out here thinking about the residents and the businesses. Thank you TJ and the finance team for coming up with creative ways to save the residents, including me, some money this year. And I thank you all for joining this meeting, and we will see you in five minutes at the next finance meeting. Are here, Counselor Allen, Counselor Letterman, Counselor Ramos, Counselor Fenton. Thank you for joining. Maybe others will join later, but we have to get started because these meetings are back-to-back today. Thank you, finance team. Tim Brown, Chris Caputo, Pat Burns, Lindsey Hackett, and I think TJ left, but maybe he'll come back. Oh, I see you TJ. I'm sorry, I was looking for your name, because everybody else's name is up there. So I was just reading them, but you are here in the meeting, in your meeting room. And, um, did I say Counselor Curran? If not, I meant to acknowledge you, Counselor Curran. And thank you to our guest, Nancy Creed, President Springfield Chamber of Commerce, and Kathleen Brown, Chair of the East Forest Park Civic Association. All right, so we're going to get started, and we're just going to go down the agenda, and we'll start with October Revenue and Expenditure Report.
Thank you, Counselor. Tonight, you have the October Revenue and Expenditure Report. You'll see our revenue is outpacing our expenditures at this point, and that's normal course of action at this point of the fiscal year, as we've billed half the tax bills, the first being due August 1st and the second being due November 1st. So you see our real estate and personal property tax collection is at 45% through this point in the fiscal year, as we've only been through 33.3% of the fiscal year. So this is normal in the past, when we made the one appropriation payment to the Springfield Retirement System. We were in a deficit position, but this year, due to circumstances with cash flow in the pandemic, we're making one 12th payments. So through October, we've only made four payments this fiscal year.
Okay, did you want to talk about the expenditures at all? I just wanted to know, the 16.3 million, is that at the bottom, is excess revenue? So we're not in the red?
As of October 31st, which is pretty much normal, just based on our, our schedule of revenues, whereas we bill taxes and we collect taxes, so that through four months of the fiscal year, we've already billed 50% of our tax revenue. So that's way above of what it should be if you were to annualize it over 12 months. So I wish the 16.3 million would be how we'd end the year, but I think it's going to be much closer to breaking even at this point.
Okay, well, it's good news for right now. We'll just enjoy that. All right, thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
I lost my agenda. The Parks Department, Park Grant for Loon Pond, $400,000.
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, so this is a grant that we received for the development and construction of Loon Pond. It's a park grant. The total cost of the project, $650,000. This grant is for $400,000, and we have a match from CDBG funds for $250,000.
Well, that's great. Very good. Thank you. Any questions from my colleagues? Okay, moving right along. Senior Community Service Employment Grant Increase, in-kind match required for $103,522.
Yes, so this is an increase. The total amount of the grant is... Oh, I wanted to make sure I wasn't on mute. The total amount of the grant is $91,701. And this is just part of our annual grant that we receive each year, and this is just an increase to that.
Thank you very much. I just want to acknowledge Counselor Gomez, who's on the committee, Counselor President Hurst for joining, Freddie Lopez, who's on the Tax Rate Setting Committee, which was half hour ago, but we still welcome you, can still stay on this meeting. Thank you for joining. Next item is the Critical Services COVID-19 Grant Increase, no match required for $100,000.
So this is another increase to a grant that you've already accepted. This brings the total amount to the Critical Services COVID grant to $300,000. This is managed out of HHS, and it's for the Rapid Assessment of Need Services Resources for Public Messaging, Community and Community Education in the City. And it does provide technical assistance based on needs. I'm just seeing if there's anything else. It also provides funding if we need any HHS, if there's any surge in staffing, any communication support, or public health coordination with healthcare systems.
Very good. Any questions? Oh, Tim, you had your hand raised. Oh, I see you now. People are moving, so you were over here, and I'm over there.
Yeah, thanks. It was, it was for a couple items back. Lindsey, that Loon Pond project, did you say the $400,000? I'm just wondering what the total cost of the project is, the $400,000. Go ahead.
Sorry about that. Sorry, $650,000 is the total project cost, $400,000 is the grant, and our match from CDBG funding is $250,000.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, seeing no other questions, we will move on to the Police CIT Grant. $80,000, no match required.
So this is for the continuation and development of the Police Department's Crisis Intervention Team. It was developed in, not in the city, but originally developed in 1988. The programs are widely implemented across the country. And the funding will be used for overtime expenses, training expenses, professional training for the Crisis Intervention Team, and training for officers on how to properly facilitate and ensure appropriate treatment for individuals they're trying to help and individuals with mental illness.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the transfer from the stabilization reserves to the Law Department Settlement Account for $6.809 million.
Thank you, Counsel. There isn't much I can really say about this now. Ed Ku is going to be on the Zoom at 6:30 to answer questions that may come up. This is a transfer of $6.8 million to the settlement account based upon some recent cases that the Law Department has. And I think Eddie May, Attorney for Ku, may have briefed the council during an executive session relatively recently.
Yes, I have Counsel Fenton with his hands raised.
Thank you. TJ, not about the specifics of what the transfer is for, but if we make this transfer, will we still be in compliance with the financial ordinances specifically related to percentage of our annual expenditures saved in stabilization?
Excellent question. I'll have an answer for the 6:30 meeting. I'll calculate that right after this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Great question, Counsel Fenton. Any others? All right, seeing none. A budget transfer within a department for $78,918.
Thank you. So this is a transfer within the Law Department, a surplus in their salary and savings line to transfer over to their professional services line. They've had an increase in the contracted services this year, and they're looking to transfer some of that savings over to fund the additional need for this year.
For professional services?
For professional services, yes.
So they have additional need for professional services? Do you know, like, which professional services?
So I do believe this is something that Ed can speak to a little bit more tonight. But yeah, so they have, you know, additional need than they've had in the past, more than we budgeted for, so they're looking to transfer some of this money over as using another funding source.
That's good. I'll ask Ed for the details. Thank you.
Okay.
Bills of a prior year for various departments, $6,245.23.
Yes, so this one is bills of a prior year totaling $6,245.23. Services rendered in a mix between FY '19, FY '20 for various departments, facilities, TJ, oh, elections, small amounts.
Okay, it is small amounts. So thank you. Any questions? So any questions on anything you guys heard? All right, seeing none. That gives us a little bit of a break. We have another meeting at, is it 5:30?
Nope, 5 o'clock.
5 o'clock.
5 o'clock, you have a hearing.
Okay, 5 o'clock, guys. See you in a little.
Yeah, a little.
This meeting is adjourned.